Too fluid. Too fluid.
Do you guys have a little clicker?
Take one. Is that it? Take one.
Hi, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the great law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending this evening. First order of business is, well, all board members are present. First item of business is to approve the agenda. I would like to recommend a change to new business item C. In the last sentence where it says the board will approve the budget parameters and priorities and long-range plan as presented, I'd like to strike that last phrase "and long-range plan." Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the modification?
I'll make the motion to approve it as proposed.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Consent agenda this evening, we have the check wire transfer dispersment summary and our bank reconciliation statement for November, or for December. We have donation of $100 from Jeffrey Greens and Residential Mortgage Group for Glendale Elementary, 500 from debit card program at the Prior Lake State Bank for the Prior Lake High School, resignations as presented, and that is it. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second. Second by Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. And now we have Laker Pride, which we're going to delay.
We're going to delay for just a few minutes.
So if there's no objections, I'd like to push Laker Pride out a little bit and start with... I'm sorry, what? Oh. Then I'd like to offer, then I'd like to move on to open, oh, Laker Showcase, Prior Lake High School, sorry. You scared me, Mr. White.
Why, I'm scared myself. Laker Pride, Laker Showcase. Good evening. I have a couple of things to present to you tonight with the Sixth Period Day Committee going on, the Girl Task Force and everything going on. You've heard a lot about the high school, a lot about the programs we've got going on over the last year. There's a couple I thought that we would go over tonight. And the first one, I got Ms. Kelly Flanagan here. Kelly is one of our teachers who does our hybrid learning courses, and you've heard a little bit about them, but Kelly's going to give you just a little, little more in-depth, I guess, insight into her schedule. And then what I've asked Kelly to do tonight is demonstrate the delivery system, which we are using is Moodle, which is the delivery system we are using to deliver that curriculum. There are many amount there, so I thought it'd be interesting if Kelly would demonstrate that. Then I've asked Dave Brown to come and give us a few more statistics on the ALC. Ms. Fluker did a wonderful article in conjunction with students, but I have some statistics for you now. Dave is gone tonight. He's actually working on his admin license and in class, so I'll be filling in for him. But first, I'd like to introduce Ms. Kelly Flanagan.
Hi, everyone. I teach college prep comp and college prep literature at the high school, and we've just started using Moodle this year, as you know. And I think it's been a really wonderful way to supplement the in-class instruction that we have. And so basically, just to give you an idea of what my day looks like and what the students' day looks like, each student meets as, the students meet as a whole group two days out of the week. They meet every Tuesday and every Thursday. That's where I deliver the majority of the curriculum content. I lecture. It's kind of, Dan is in the class, so he can kind of tell you, it's very lecture-based on those days, not a lot of activity. And then each student is assigned to a writing group where they meet an additional day out of the week. So each student comes to class, sees me, and works with their peers three days out of the week. The other two, the expectation is that they are logging into Moodle and that they are working on the class content on their own time, and they can kind of choose when they work with that. So I will show you how to kind of navigate Moodle. How do I, not just like that, it's good. Just ask. Okay, so when the students log in, they come to this page, and a list of their classes will be up on the site. And then the teacher page and the student page are pretty similar. So the student will log in, and they see right at the top, there's a news forum, and in the news forum is where there's all sorts of announcements for the kids. And I post in that forum every day. They get those announcements emailed to them. So for example, the one that I sent last Thursday was just a review for the day, and it explains to the students what we cover during the class day, what assignments are upcoming, if there's any corrections I need to make, any scheduling changes, things like that. So each student can log in and see this, or they can check their email, and it's emailed to them. Some of the features that I use a lot are being able to post assignments to PDF versions, and the kids can log in and just click on the assignment as it is, similar to the webpages. I also post websites that they can use. And one of the most popular features, and my favorite, is the forum use. And I use that feature all the time. So they just did their little brother thesis statement, which is one of the novels that we read. The assignment is listed in a box at the top. They click on that. They can read the assignment, read any expectations that I have. The due date is listed there. And then the way that I have this forum set up is each student needs to click on, if you were a student logging in, you wouldn't see the students' names below, it would just be blank. They have to click "add a new question," they submit their thesis statement, and then after they submit that, then they can see everyone else's work. So they submit it, and then they are eligible to see everybody else's. And you can see that it's a popular thing to do. They all post their thesis statements. Okay, so I'll get to read all these papers pretty soon. And that way, the students can read each other's work, they can respond to it, and it takes away some of that pressure of being in class, being face-to-face, having to come up with something to say right on the spot. They get the chance to go home, to reflect on what other students have written. They can formulate a response and then submit that response as they're ready to do so. So it's the same delivery as I would use in a regular classroom, but just a little bit of a different method.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And the replies, so it looks like they comment on each other's work as well?
They can, yeah. And sometimes in the beginning, I'll assign them to respond to one or two other people. I might say, "You have to respond to someone in your writing group," or "respond to someone not in your writing group," to let them get the chance to get to know each other a little bit better. Sometimes I will post statements, and they have to respond to me. And I've seen, I haven't done this, but I've seen other instructors post articles that the students need to read, and then they submit a response or a reflection to the article, and that can get some great discussions going as they get their different insights and their different opinions all written out.
When they responded, have been very, I mean, the students have been very respectful towards each other and things like that?
Yeah, very much so. And we talk about that at the beginning of the trimester. They know that I see and can read everything. And also, even if they delete it, it's still there. I can still see things that have been deleted. And I think by and large, they are more curious about what each other have to say, and they're pretty respectful. So I haven't had any issues yet with students posting things that I think they should take down or that are inappropriate. The grammar sometimes is a little questionable, and that's one of the things that we focus on, is that they need to see this as a classroom instructional website, not as something like Facebook where they can use text language and things like that. We really stress that they still need to operate this as if they would an academic paper where they use correct grammar, they use spelling, they do grammar check, and they do spell check on their documents before they post them to the website. Any other questions?
So Dan, how's it going?
Well, it's quite an interesting class. One thing that I noticed is that I had a couple of friends who took online college courses as an English class their first trimester, and the similarities between the class that we're taking now and what they're taking online are very, very close, where the teacher will post like a writing prompt, and then, well, the college was like a religious college, I'd say, so a lot of the discussions were a little bit more religious-based, but everyone would have to make an essay and post it, and then they all would have to read and review other students' posts and like either give criticism, or give support, or say different, you know, different things that they might need to work on their paper to add into it. And so I think that being that this is still a high school course, you see a lot of stuff that carries into the college level.
I know the University of Minnesota, I'm in grad school there, and they have decided to make the switch over to Moodle for all of their college professors. So students who are at Prior Lake will be at a distinct advantage if they attend the U of M, and I know a lot of other institutions are utilizing Moodle. And if they can figure it out here and get very acclimated to it and really know their way around it, it's just one less stress that they have when they get to college. And I think that it's going to be really beneficial to the students to have access to this here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask, Kelly, have you seen any change in the quality of the work this year from going from strictly in class to Moodle experience?
On the quality, I'm not, I'm sure it has, I'll say that, but I, the biggest thing that I've noticed is that I have more students turning in all of their work consistently, and I had a significant drop in the amount of overall failures from this year, like from first trimester compared to years past. And part of that is I have guideline in class that if the student falls below a C-minus level at any point in the trimester, then they need to attend class every single day. So they lose that privilege of having the extra days off, off, which their friends really like, and it's a nice amount of freedom for them. And so I had a couple of kids stay in today, and they were saying how they really needed to get their work in so that they can get their grade back up. But I had only two students fail during the first trimester out of over 75 kids, which was rare and definitely an improvement over past years.
So that kind of opens up, can either Kelly, you, or Dave, refresh us on, you know, obviously this was done in response to trying to kind of be more effective in our space, right? So can you kind of, you know, you mentioned 75, is that how many you have in a given class? And then what, you know, what are the kids that aren't there than those two days? I mean, do they have a place in that timeframe for them to go to a computer lab, or how, and what is their day looking like on their non-contact days, if you want to call it that?
I have fall trimester, I have three sections, and I have three also with around 30 students in each section. And the hours are scheduled, this trimester, it's first hour, sixth hour, and seventh hour, so toward the beginning and the end of the day. Students who have it first or seventh hour on their days when they're not in my class, they, some choose to come to school and work anyway, and they might work in the commons, or they're always invited to be in the classroom. Sometimes they will sleep in or leave early during seventh hour. And so it would be an advantage to have the hybrids offered kind of every hour, and I think we're going to be moving to that in the future to give kids a little bit more flexibility within their own schedules. But yeah, so it's alleviating the space crunch because many students are not coming in first hour at all, and then they come in second hour, or if they have it seventh hour, they leave early, similar to our work release programs.
Okay.
In the future, we will have them all the way through the hours, but it's advantageous to us to have them first hour, seventh hour, or even over the lunch hour. Next year, we'll have 59-minute classes. If the student has that at the time where they have their 30-minute lunch, you know, they're looking at 90 minutes, you know, and they don't have to do their work during that time. I have a daughter that's taking a class right now using Moodle through Bethel. She's a high school student taken, and just like Dan said, that's exactly what she does. They're in an 85-minute class, she doesn't just, she doesn't have to show up at school until almost 11 o'clock. So the wish is for space that the students leave, but we do have computer space for them, and that's what the Girl Task Force was also the push to get more computers in the pod. We'd like to, we'd like to do more of this, just because it's the right thing to do for students and their education.
Great, thank you. And you also, kind of along that college aspect, office hours on Friday, is that kind of the best way to describe it, or do you really have a pull?
Yes. Yeah, I don't conduct class at all on Friday for the college prep comp students, and it's open time, except for the students who are below C-minus, and they really hate that. So they just come in and sit with me, and it's fun. But that's open time where students have, if they have questions about papers, if they have any concerns about their grades, it's a great time to conference with parents. They can come in, then it opens up that time a little bit more to be more flexible if they want to come in during a different hour other than before school or after school. I also make assignment due dates always on Friday, which frees up, it can take a lot of time during classes to have kids stapling papers and collecting things and passing them forward. So by making all of my assignments due on Fridays, the kids just drop things off periodically during the day, gives them a little bit more flexibility. If they forget something, they need to go home and get it, they can do that without a penalty. And I just make sure that everything is turned in to me by 3:00 by the end of the day, and I think that that's another step toward college where papers are often due at a time rather than at a class period, and it puts a lot of the responsibility on them that they have to find that time during the day to get to me to get that paper turned in.
So they're turning in hard copies?
Yeah, for their, for their major essays, they turn in hard copies. For reflections, for smaller assignments, then I'll have them post those to the Moodle website.
And you have a specific time they have to be posted by?
Yes. Yeah. Usually, usually I have it by midnight on a certain night, because if I clicked into the forum here, you would see that students are on at all hours of the day and night. They really utilize that freedom to be able to work it into their schedule. When they're done with work, they come home, and it's 11:00, they do their homework for an hour, wake up early in the morning and do it, and it's very, it's a very high school-oriented hour thing there, so.
Do you find the discussion that happens online, does that bleed over into the classroom so you get a more vibrant discussion compared to?
Yeah, I would say so, and I think that students are, they feel more comfortable, especially with this generation, they feel very comfortable exchanging information online, and they like to talk to each other online probably more than they would talk to someone they don't know in the classroom face-to-face. They wouldn't necessarily go up and say, "Yeah, I really agree with, you know, what you're saying right now," but on the Moodle site, they might come on and log on and say, "I really agree with that point, that's great." And then they've met each other, so to speak, and then when they're in the classroom, then they'll carry on that conversation, and others have read it, so then it builds into a more fruitful discussion with the whole group. I love Moodle. I would love to use it for all my classes. I would, it's fantastic. And there's no, it's enhanced the content that I teach. It has, I think, made it a better experience for the student because it's more in line with how they learn best. They learn on the computer, that's what they pay attention to more than just someone talking to them in the front of the room.
Any other questions?
Thanks a lot.
I was just going to, Moodle is one of the delivery systems. I, you know, I teach for Concordia University at night, and there we use a system called Blackboard somewhat. There's a lot of engines like this. I teach in-class class, but the students submit all their work to me because they're from districts all over. So this is, I know college students that have an in-class, but now this is how the instructors do their tests. They open the testing window on Friday at 8:00 a.m., and it shuts down like Ms. Flanagan can do with hers on late assignments. They'll tell their students, "You've got four hours to go in and complete this online test. The window opens at this time, closes at this time, get in there and do that." The other, one thing I want to mention that goes along with the questions, when, when the online classes first came out, one of the phenomenons that came out was, was more participation by students. When you're sitting in a class of 30, there's 20 very shy students. The anonymity, even though you know who they are, their name and everything, but they're not face-to-face, the anonymity, their finding of the students being able to post their thoughts and compose their thoughts, more and more students are actively involved in an electronic conversation, and it's drawing kids more into discussion than it happens in a face-to-face conversation. So. So that's Moodle. I'm going to very quickly go through Mr. Brown's slides. I will see if I can get all this figured out up here. And see if it comes up. We've talked, I'm clicking it, Kristy. There you go.
Good job.
Thank you. Technology. Bridges Learning Center, you've heard, you've heard a lot about it. There was a very nice article in the paper. So I asked Mr. Brown for some statistics. All right, you've heard all, let's, let's cut to some statistics on what's going on. Dave would have been here, and Dave, where's the premier purveyor of alternative education in the Twin Cities metropolitan area? I'm not going to read this all to you, but if you kind of look there, you can see what the day is like. I think you've seen most of this information, but this is the nature of alternative education. It fits more to the students' individual needs. Curriculum programming designs. The curriculum design follows the high school curriculum as closely as we possibly can. It's taken out the important parts, expanding on it, more individualizing it, but if you notice, the staff goal of alternative education is surround every student with caring, da-da-da-da, and rejects the open heart mass with every open book. We use textbooks, we use balances, we use microscopes, we make models. We do the same stuff they do at a traditional high school, just in a little different pace and a little different method. I'll just let you read here. A number of years ago, oh, when the National Principles Organization moved to a different hours in education, relevance, rigor, and relationships, and relationships is huge at the Area Learning Center level. Alternative education, that's probably the most important thing. So you'll see Dave has a lot of stuff on here about relationships. Not only are they teaching every hour, they're working very hard on building relationships with students. And this comment here, "At-risk students thrive when they feel adults care and are interested and respect them," that is probably the key to the whole success of any alternative program, adults who care. And I can honestly say over at Bridges, every one of them does. All right, here's some statistics. Students who earn 75% of credits enroll. 84% if you know, earn, that's huge. A lot of these students were experiencing 10% to 0% success passing rate. Maybe they were passing 15% of their classes at our traditional high school. Right now, overall, 84% of them, or they're, they're passing 84% of their credits. That puts them online for graduation, by the way. And now you look at all the classes we're teaching over the grand, and we've got four instructors over there. They all have an expertise in an area, plus we have Plato, an online learning system, a little different than Moodle that you've seen, but it's a self-leveling, self-directed. We have 20 licenses over, and we have the ability to offer everything, including, and we're not there, but you'll see Advanced Calc down there. We're teaching Advanced Calc over at the ALC. And through our program, we have a couple of students that I just heard are interested in running AP classes, and we can do that too. So it's alternative education. Doesn't mean we're not pushing rigor and that kids won't get AP classes, and it's just at a different mode of delivery. I want to stress that one. Online credit computer lab, we do have a computer lab available, periods one through four. We have 20 computers over there right now, currently for student use. We'd like to expand that in the future if we can. We have 20 Plato licenses. Plato's the license that allows us to deliver that which our staff is not credited for. Plato will go anything from remediation for basic skills tests all the way to up to AP language, AP science, AP math, and AP history. Cost-effective, Plato is very expensive. I will put that little plug in there, but it's the best out there. Graduate, all seniors are able at. Now, we talked about the six students that were able to graduate after try one this year. Five didn't make it. What came as kind of the unsung heroes because it was new program, we had eight students graduate last year that walked through our ceremonies. Seven of them walked through the ceremonies with us. You know, they get a Prior Lake High School diploma, same exact diploma, every high school student at Prior Lake, and they're very welcome. This year, we're going to look at an individualized graduation ceremony, but those students are part of the high school. And that's why I'm talking to you tonight about it, and I wanted a part of this, their part of the high school. Just a different program branch of our high school, yes?
They can attend the Area Learning Center and also some at the high school.
Yeah, transportation becomes an issue. I don't know if we have anybody this trimester with Mr. Bennett taking over, I'm not as familiar, but last year, we had students going back to the high school for outdoor ed, for music, for classes that they really wanted to take, for IT classes that we couldn't offer. We would organize it, so maybe that was the first hour of their day, their last hour of the day, and students were dual enrolled at both. Fired credits, it talks about limited, but you notice students, and we want to span, students going, working in the community, working for our parks, working for the city, something that we've been kind of exploring, they can get fired credits for that. You know, landscaping, work with landscaping, there's, there's alternative ways that you can accredit students. Get them out in the job, get them working for the city, get them doing some park stuff like the outdoor ed, get them in cooperation, get that, that community cooperation, and they can earn credits while they're doing it. Operator? Trust me. Hey. 60 students are retained in the district. Actually, we're, you know, we're in about that mid-60s right now with the five graduating or the six not going anymore. So total, we've been up to 71, and you can see what Mr. Brown has written up there. We're in about those mid-60s, we're about 10 hired where we were last year. We'd like to expand. Part of that comes with promoting. The students in our district know about the program, and it's been very successful. But in its second year, you know, we take in from other communities. You have a brochure in front of you that's going out there? I'll keep complimenting Merron over here with the article. I've heard a lot of positives from the article, the interview done in the local papers last week. And so part of this is also promoting the program. We have room to expand, we would like to expand. It's a great program, we'd like to offer it. It's open to any student in the state by, you know, by rule, by law can come. And so you can see the brochure. Mr. Delwell and I are working at getting a signage up there, hopefully, so we can, you know, get a big sign up there so people know that we're not the tanning booth in the end, or the salon, or whatever it is. And great things are going on there, and we've got to do a little more marketing out there. And as we grow, again, we'd like to place more instructors. Right now, Melissa, 20 to 1 is probably, 18 to 1, 20 to 1. Ms. Olson is a teacher there, she'll be presenting later. We'd really like to bring that down to 15 to 1. But as you've got a new program, you've got to establish the monies and everything, but if we can, if we can get up to about 70, I can hire another one. So we're recruiting. Questions? If I can't answer, I'll put, have no problem putting Melissa on the spot. I looked for you earlier, I know you did. Any questions? I know you, you saw the statistics, we haven't given you that before.
Are there any out-of-district students attending?
Yes, but very, a few, but not many.
One from Shock, if you think.
And when we had the NSAS program, we had more, huh? Safe Haven, you know, we had more students there that would come in temporarily safe. So we get them, transportation can cause a problem there for those students, but I, as we grow, we will get more. Yes.
Dave, are these students allowed to participate in co-curricular activities at the high school also?
Yes. Co-curricular and extracurricular.
Okay.
Athletics activities if they so choose. Yes, they follow high school league rules, is what you're saying. They have to be a student in good standing, but yes. I'm trying to think, we did have somebody coming over last year, and I can't remember what it was for, over to the high school. We do run night school there. We run night school at the high school through the Area Learning Center. We now have 27 kids involved in credit recovery at the high school, but that's run through the Area Learning Center. run through the Area Learning Center and our summer school program. And I know Melissa and Dave and Loke and Peter and Sarah would love to have you come over and tour sometime during the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to skip back up to and go to Laker Pride. Please give us a quick second.
Kathy Lowry. Yes, yes. Come on up. Kathy Lowry is the social worker at Jeffers Pond. Come right up here. Stand between us, please. And she has been given the Lifetime Achievement Award by her organization, the Midwest Social Foundation. Lifetime Achievement, you know, and you want to recognize that. Kathy has served on numerous committees, including the Student Assistance Team, the Problem Solving Team, the Chemical Health Week Committee, the Crisis, Building Crisis Recovery Team, and the District Crisis Response Team, just to name a few. She's been in our district since nineteen eighty-five, working in our different schools, and we're delighted to recognize you tonight. There is brought to mind a quote by Confucius, that if you do what you love, then you won't work a day of your life. And it shows that what you do each day, that you love what you do. And we're delighted to recognize you with a certificate that Eric has for you, and congratulate you on your wonderful career that continues.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I would like to thank the district and all of the administrators who have been my supervisors through the years, because without their support, to be presidents of our organizations or to sometimes be out of our buildings to contribute to our profession, and I wouldn't have been able to do the things I have done either. So I've always really appreciated the support from the district.
We have one more candidate tonight. It's Tom Hassick, who is our choir director at the high school. And Monday nights do not work for him, so I will be delivering his certificate to him in person right at the high school. That's it.
Suanne, you want to mention why he's being recognized?
Yes, I would. I'll hand the baton over to Eric.
Tom is our vocal choir, our high school vocal director, and he's been awarded the Choral Director of the Year by his state association. This honor, which celebrates directors for establishing high performance and literature standards and promoting choral music in the community, among other things, it's only available to the members of the state association. Tom Hassick has been working for our school district for twenty-three years, so it's with great pleasure that we honor him in absentia tonight, and we'll be delivering this to him this week.
That's great.
This is the point in time of our agenda where we allow for open forum. Open forum is a point in time where we allow residents of our district to address the school board on matters not on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to move on to personnel. Matt?
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Grover. First, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I hear a motion for approval? So moved by Tom, second. By Lee. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven-zero. Matt?
And second, I would like to present the following leads of absence and am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the leads of absence?
So moved.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any questions or discussion on leads of absence? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries seven-zero. We have no old business, and so I'd like to move to new business, Minnesota Student Survey results. Mr. Service, Mr. Edwards, and Ms. Olson.
All right. Members of the board, Dr. Grover, we are here to present to you the results from the 2010 Minnesota Student Survey. As you know, you received in advance of tonight's meeting an executive summary, which is included in your board packet. And our purpose tonight is to highlight some key findings or key components of that executive summary. We'll give you, first of all, some, I'll review some of the survey background and talk a little bit about the committee process, and then I will turn it over to Eric and Melissa, and they will be talking about the key insights and recommendations for action steps moving forward. This Minnesota Student Survey is somewhat of a reminder for some of you who have been on the board previously and new members to the board. This is a collaborative effort by the Minnesota Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health and Human Services and Department of Health and Public Safety, and this is an ongoing survey that is conducted for, of our students in our school district and school districts throughout the state of Minnesota, and it is conducted every three years. And it includes students as a part of their sixth, ninth, and twelfth grade year. And so we are here and have results and have provided for you the executive summary of results from last spring's survey, the 2010 survey. And a couple of key notes to acknowledge about the participation in the survey. It is voluntary, entirely voluntary. It is conducted in the spring, as I mentioned, and given to sixth graders, ninth graders, and twelfth graders, and confidential in nature and anonymous. And we'll talk a little bit more about that and where potentially that helps. Understanding that background of the voluntary nature is important to help understand the data. It is used as a planning tool, and we'll talk a little bit about the process for us as a district and how we have utilized and intend to utilize this tool as we move forward. The committee, we did pull together, the information is reported to our school district and other school districts throughout the state of Minnesota, and therefore, we look at the data as a school district initially. But going back to the previous slide about the collaboration, this is intended to be information that is gathered from our students, and it's gathered in the school setting, but it's not entirely about the school as much as it is a reflection of the entire community. And going back to the collaboration, that's essential to processing the data and moving forward. We have put together the committee here at the school district level and brought together, as you can see, the people listed there, to take a look at the results of the data as it was reported. And we did so in a large group setting with the members that you saw present listed there in a sense of a data retreat. And then we divided and conquered, if you will, that information into a series of subcommittee groups of those different people, looking at the revisions of our insight statements and checking to make sure that our data is, was accurate, and we were interpreting that data correctly. And then prepared an executive summary in early January and provided that executive summary for all members of the committee to review. And then that is what you were presented with prior to tonight's school board meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Eric and Melissa both to talk about some of the
First and foremost, it's important for you to understand how we approached and tackled the challenge of breaking down all of that, you know, overwhelming amount of data. We kind of approached it from three different perspectives. The first perspective, we did a comparative analysis, comparing our local data to the state and to Scott County. We found in the end that the comparison to Scott County was more useful, being that obviously our proximity, but a lot of the behaviors and challenges that we see come up in our data, other schools in the area are sharing that as well. We also did a trend analysis where we looked at our local data over time, going back to nineteen ninety-eight, and then, of course, three years ago, our most recent survey, 2007. We also, in some cases, found it useful to do a cohort analysis where we followed a certain group of students through their middle and high school experience as sixth graders in one survey dataset, and then as ninth graders three years later, and twelfth graders three years after that. You'll see more of the cohort analysis come up in the executive summary. There wasn't much that we used in this presentation in that regard, in those regards, sorry. Before Melissa jumps into our key insights, it's important to point out that the Minnesota Student Survey does have some limitations. First and foremost, like Dan said, it's a voluntary survey, and so you can see here, not every student completed the survey. And when we got to our senior students and some of the students at Bridges, that becomes problematic. Being that, you know, roughly forty-five percent of the students completed the survey in twelfth grade last year, we don't and we can't say for certain that the sample we did get of two hundred and sixty students is an accurate or reflective cross-section of the entire senior class. Therefore, it's not fair to say that ten percent of any, you know, given piece of data reflects the entire ten percent in the entire senior class. It could be more than that, the reality, it could be less than that. And so that is a challenge in the statistical data that we got in the Minnesota Student Survey. And the same challenge goes for Bridges. And so that's important to know it as we go through these key insights. Another limitation is that the survey is done every three years by cohorts, and so you miss some key transitional grade levels, being seventh and eighth grade, and then tenth and eleventh grade. And we don't collect data on those students, and oftentimes, what you'll find is those are critical gaps in identifying when some of these behaviors began or when they tend to become more severe. And then a third survey limitation, I just have to go back to my notes here, is that we don't know for certain if the students that did complete the survey completed it honestly. You always run the risk whenever you do something anonymous where there's really no incentive, there may be some students that complete it just to complete it without accurate results. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa for the beginning of our key insights.
Good evening. One of the things we really want to focus on is not just what are the naughty things our kids are doing, but also what are the really great things our kids are doing. And that's a benefit of this survey. There are really three points to celebrate as we looked at the questions and the answers of the students. The majority of our students feel safe at school, which to me is a really big deal. Even the Bridges students, high numbers, high nineties, feel safe at school. And this is across the board. We're looking at sixth graders through twelfth graders, including Bridges, are feeling that when they're in their school building, when they're in their classroom, that they're okay there, that we're taking care of them. And that's really important, I believe, that they have that feeling and that understanding because, as we know, when those other instincts trigger, when they're not feeling safe, learning isn't as productive. The second celebration is that most students really do feel cared for by the adults in their lives, and that's a reflection of the community. Students feel that their parents and those who are raising them are cared for in a very positive way, and also other relatives or adults in their lives, mentors, people who have made a difference, that they care for them. So it's a reflection that this community is a caring community. The one small note to say is that the Bridges students, those numbers are a little lower, as to be expected, unfortunately. Sometimes, a lot of these students aren't feeling, are feeling rejected by their families, so those numbers aren't quite as high, but they're still pretty good. Upper seventy percent feel their parents care for them. At Bridges, about sixty-three percent feel that other adults in their lives care for them. So not the nineties that we're looking for, but we're, as we begin the trend data, it's good to note where we start. Also, another important thing to look at, most students plan on attending college or universities in our community. Even at Bridges, students who took the survey say they want to do something with their lives, and they think they can. And that's really important to us, that we're sending that message, that we want you to learn, we want you to continue your education, we want you to come back to Prior Lake School Districts and be a leader, be someone who we can count on. And that's happening. Ninth through twelfth grade students at Prior Lake High School, ninety-eight percent of them want to go on to college. And out of that ninety-eight percent, ninety percent want it to be a four-year school. So that says a lot about who we are and our expectations of success here. So part of the student survey speaks to the use of alcohol and drugs and other risky behaviors that some students tend to perhaps participate in and others don't. The first thing we're going to look at here is, we asked the students, do you think that drug use and alcohol or alcohol and drugs in general are a problem at Prior Lake High School? Are they a problem at Bridges? Are they a problem in other district schools? As you can see here, the data hasn't really changed since 2007. The trend is very similar. The one thing that we really want to point out, if you look at the red trend line, grade nine, the difference between the 2007 data and 2010 data, boy, those ninth graders, for some reason, in 2007, when they become twelfth graders, that jumps. So between ninth and twelfth grade, their perception of alcohol and drugs at school has become, you know, they believe it's a problem. So there's a gap there between there. But otherwise, the survey data is pretty much the same for 2007. Okay, so alcohol consumption. Overall, it appears a percentage of students who consume alcohol is declining. If you look at the line, everything is kind of going downward, which looks like a really good thing. However, once we really started focusing on, like, how many of those students are drinking more than they should? How many students are drinking five or more drinks? How many students are doing that more and more times a month? And those numbers start to spike our interest because the binge-drinking data is definitely alarming in some cases. So percentage of students who have had five or more drinks in the last two weeks. So looking at that data, it looks like it's also declining. The trends appear to be declining. However, a closer look reveals the different story for Bridges and for the twelfth-grade male population. We see this point for twelfth-grade males a lot here, and it was a little alarming. A lot of twelfth-grade males are drinking an awful lot, and they're driving while they're drinking, and they're binging more than they, than other groups in the high school and other groups in the middle schools. So if you look at those populations, the reason Bridges only has an X on the trend data when you look at that is because this is the first year we've taken the data. So there isn't a trend line for those. So if you're curious about that, that's why. Okay. So as we peel away one more later, binge-drinking appears to show that the frequent binge-drinking in twelfth-grade males and at Bridges is way above the state averages than other schools, and it is close to the county average. So it's not all that, when we compare it to Scott County, as we said, that's one of our comparison points, it's pretty similar, but to the state averages, we're a lot higher than we'd like to be. And so the county average, that's about thirty-six percent of students said that they have used binge-drinking or other kind of drugs where they couldn't remember, that blackout state, thirty-six percent said they've gotten there. Okay? So that breaks down to about seventy-five students at the high school over the last ten, over the last year, that drank more than five drinks at least ten times in that year. So that's, that almost is once a month. So as you look at that, on average, it can be a little bit alarming. So that's kind of the trends that we noticed that we're looking at as far as alcohol and drug use go, and I'll let Eric finish that up for you.
And so, you know, you can kind of draw your own conclusions about the continued concern over alcohol use and abuse in the Prior Lake Savage School District. And like Melissa said, a lot of those behaviors do parallel what we were finding in 2007. One thing that has kind of come on the radar for the first time are the percentage of students who have been offered, so they're given illegal drug on school property. students who have been offered, sold, or given illegal drug on school property, so substance distribution. And you can see that since 2007, these percentages have inclined, increased, which is kind of counter to the state average. Now, I want to point out on the top of this graph, to make these numbers kind of come to life for each of these populations of students, you can see that for sixth graders, 10% is roughly 52 students. For ninth grade, 10% is 54 students. I told you about the problematic nature of the 12th grade sample, and so 10% is 26 students, could be more, could be less. 10% in Bridges is four students. And so you can take any given group there, and you can look at grade 12 in 2010, 32% have either been offered, sold, or given drugs. You know, that's roughly 60 students, okay, give or take. So that, you know, might help the numbers come to life a little bit. Another concern that we picked up on the data this year is the percentage of students reported using substances either before, during, or after, primarily before and during school, when compared to Scott County and the state average, where the two kind of data points that we focused on. You can see by these bar lines how each population of students stacks up to Scott County. Dark blue males versus the Scott County males, okay, white-green females versus the dark purple females of Scott County, and then Bridges. And so this is data that we want to continue to watch and probably investigate a little bit further to see what's undermining or underpinning it. Melissa mentioned the nature of the alcohol use and abuse problem. Along with that comes driving under the influence. You know, I'm sad to say that Prior Lake, well, I'm glad to say that Prior Lake males have a lower percentage of driving under the influence than their counterparts in Scott County. However, you can see both groups are substantially high or concerningly high. You're looking at 26% of 12th grade males have driven under the influence in the last year, and then on the right side, riding with someone who's under the influence. And you can see that Scott County and Prior Lake, or Prior Lake Savage Schools are, I'm sorry, you can't see it here, but they are much higher than the state averages. And so it's a problem that communities across the state are dealing with, but in more severity here in Scott County and Prior Lake Savage. Now, this becomes somewhat more alarming or noteworthy when you just break apart, or break off the 12th grade male population and the Bridges population. You can see that when you look at the number of times students have driven under the influence, and this is broken down by three or more times in the last year, and so you're looking at kind of repeated offenses here for 12th grade males, this is, like I said, somewhat concerning. 21%, I believe this translated into 26 males at the senior, in the senior grade last year, 21% driven three or more times under the influence last year. And you can see that is nearly double the state average. Another change in data that we saw from 2007 is the increased use of what are called club drugs. The list is up here in the right, ecstasy, liquid E, liquid X, special K. They all fit underneath kind of a general classification of club drugs. This seems to be somewhat of a unique problem for the Prior Lake Savage District in comparison to other districts around the state and even other districts in Scott County. Because there are so many lines in this graph, I tagged each Prior Lake line with a sailboat. And so the first line here are 12th, are ninth grade males compared to their Scott County counterparts. And you have ninth grade females, you can see are higher than females in ninth grade for Scott County. And then you see the biggest difference when you get into the 12th grade male and then 12th grade female populations. And so this is another area that we wish to investigate further and keep our eye on. And with that, I want to point out that those were a couple of the key insights that we polled and we wanted to kind of verbally present to you. There are other key insights in your executive summary that are noteworthy and worth the read. With all of this information, you know, it's good to have, but where the rubber hits the road is what are we going to do about it? And so as kind of the initial first steps, the committee came up with a handful of action steps. The first being the recommendation to continue with the current support structures, and these structures are listed on page 20 of your executive summary. I won't read through them all, but they include things like health classes, health services, guidance counselors, social workers, chemical health counselors, outside referrals. We are operating kind of at a decreased level from our earlier chemical health program, which was a comprehensive program, and that has been pared down substantially since 2007 to the point of almost being eliminated, and so it's important that we continue to keep what we have. Second recommendation is to reconvene the secondary health committee, and that is to look at health curriculum and the most effective placement of it in light of the new six-period day schedule and the reduction of health teachers. How can we best get the information students need to hear at a time that they need to hear it? Third recommendation is to convene an elementary health curriculum committee to identify consistent early intervention curriculum and a strategy. Fourth recommendation is to prepare and administer an annual student wellness survey, and this is to kind of catch those students in between those cohort years of the Minnesota Student Survey, years in grade 7th and 8th, grades 10th and 11th, and to try to identify where the actual increase in behavior or an increase in the severity of the behavior begins so that we can better meet the challenge of moderating it. And then finally, as, like I said, the first step in an ongoing process is to communicate these findings first to the school board here, but then to each of our schools in the district and outside community organizations to raise awareness and to begin an ongoing process of meeting these challenges and improving student wellness for the entire student body. With that, we'll turn it over to you for any questions.
Any questions for the public?
On your recommendation number five, will that include the general public, not just outside organizations?
Right now, our vision is to, we have a meeting planned with parent advisor, and we envision going to many of the community organizations with awareness presentations much like this, but we've also talked about possibly having a public information night. That is still in process, and that'll be worked out as kind of the next step, though.
I guess I have a couple more if you don't mind. In the Bridges, all the kids were surveyed there, all grade levels?
Great question. Melissa, you want to speak? They are, they're not separated from their grade levels. It was done originally, if you look at the survey that was sent to us from the state, it did actually divide them, but then when they gave us the summary, it did not, it took them apart. So we had two different ways of looking at it. The state, the state survey for ALCs had it separated between male, female, this grade, that grade, but for the summary that we had given to us by the survey folks, did not have it separated. So at this point, the data we had was a combination between all 10 through 12th grade students, male and female.
I think you kind of answered my other question here. You said you had low turnout in the high school, that may affect the statistical relevance of that. What went into your, I think I heard you answer me there, but why did you segregate out the Bridges group? Is that the state? What was the decision in doing that?
The state has two separate surveys, one for the standard traditional high school and one for the ALC group. They separated it for us in some regards, so that data came from them. It is interesting to see, I think, the difference between students in an ALC, their at-risk behaviors, their health concerns, their motivations, how they are different from regular high school students, which is why they come to us in that, in that we give that programming to them. They see things differently, they perceive things differently, come from very different backgrounds, so I think it is interesting to see just how, how much they vary from their students they're serving.
Any concern about maybe reinforcing stereotypes?
That's something that...
When you separate the two populations?
Sure. Stereotypes are unfortunately a part of our society in a lot of ways, and I've taught at-risk children for 10 years now, and I got to tell you, there are more stereotypes out there about these kids than I care to share, and most of them aren't true. So it's a general idea that students at the ALC have more, have more issues, are naughty, are bad kids. I got to tell you, I work with them every day, and I don't have any really bad kids. I have some kids who make a lot of bad choices, but they're not bad people. And so I think breaking those stereotypes is part of why I'm here, it's part of why we want to share with you the information about Bridges, why we're proud of what we do there. So I think it is different, and it's important to note that, but at the same time, they still are our children in our district, and we embrace them the same way.
I had a couple of questions. I was disturbed by the students that are driving under the influence as well, and also looking at some of the trend lines, and even the sixth grade trend line, even though it's a small percentage, that showed over time the increasing concern of drugs in the school. Any thoughts on that from that sixth grade level? Do you think they're reacting to what they see from older, what they hear from older siblings, or they, really what they're experiencing?
You know, I think that's a great question, and I think it's really hard to, particularly with sixth graders, to understand what's at heart, which is part of that recommendation, the fourth recommendation that the committee seemed to, we, to better understand what it is that they're reporting, I think we feel to gather that information from across the middle school experience, because certainly the experiences and perspective of a sixth grader as compared to a seventh or eighth grader could show us some more enlightening information that would help us plan accordingly. So I think that's part of that fourth recommendation that you see gets at that issue.
And then, just one more question, you didn't really touch on it, but, and there hasn't been a lot of movement in the girls being forced or coerced into sexual activity, but I was shocked at the high percentage, particularly compared to the state, of ninth grade girls following in that category. Any thoughts on what sets us apart, or is it, again, I mean, we have a high percentage of students in that grade level answering the survey?
Well, it's an observation that the committee definitely looked into, and I believe ninth grade girls, is it 3%? Or, sorry?
10% in 2007, 11% in 2010, 9% state average.
And so, yeah, it was less than a 3% movement, and as a committee, we thought that any type of behavior in that category is a concerning behavior that needs to be monitored and, you know, looked at. But there's a couple of things that played a factor in how we perceived that. First of all, when you're comparing data sets, the same percentage of students in 2007 didn't answer the survey in 2010. And so a percentage difference in 2007 may mean the difference of one or two students in 2010, it may mean the difference of four or five students, and so in some regards, you get into kind of apples and oranges, and so we were careful to keep that as a consideration. And also, an interesting thing about that question is, it's worded in such a way where it's open for interpretation. It's, the question is, have you ever been forced to have sex or forced to do something sexual that you didn't want to do? And so when you get into, we had a discussion in the committee, when you get into conversations about forced to do something sexual, for different people, that means different things, and so we didn't look too much into that question, although we did see that it needs to be monitored on an ongoing basis.
And I would add to that, I think we processed through that, which also led to that second action step recommendation there, about tying that to the conversations of the secondary health teachers to look at the curriculum specific to that topic and make sure that it's being addressed, and it being addressed multiple times at age-appropriate levels, developmentally for our students, and acknowledging that that is potentially something that our ninth graders, for example, as the survey shows, we need to be cognizant of that as we are preparing the curriculum in the later middle school years into the early high school, because those are things that they are being...
First, I want to thank the committee for going through all these statistics. It's got to be a little bit, you know, heavy, kind of. And Melissa, I really appreciate your comments on the ALC and the students there, because you're absolutely right. I also want to comment on, you just mentioned the secondary health, like Dan, and while I know we've got some programs in place that are supposed to be helping, I kind of question as to how helpful they really are, and if our efforts and our finances are being put in the right places. So will this committee look at that possibly? Or I would like to ask that that committee look at that, to see how effective some of those programs really are, if that's something we can look into. And the question keeps coming up, I mean, I know kids are kids, you know, and that's what everybody says, but what drives some of these kids to do this? What's the reason behind it? Is it really truly that they don't have anything to do? I looked in some of the detail that you had sent that I hadn't seen before, and it talked about how, why aren't you in an after-school activity? And some of the highest things were not interesting to me, can't get there, that was low. It was more about what they're interested in, if I remember it on that statistic. The other statistic that kind of bothered me is when the kids were asked, "What does your mom or dad think about drinking?", or whatever it was, there were comments made in there, percentages, that said, "They don't care, they're okay with it, they accept it." So we do need to get out into the community, we need to get to the organizations, we need to get to the parents. We need to let people know it's really not okay, you know? It comes back to parenting, whether you want to be their friend or their parent, I guess, and that's a hard thing to do. I'm not belittling that at all. But that is a concern, and that does need to be addressed, and in this community, I think we do have a problem with that, where, you know, it's okay, because I know, I know you're safe here doing it, so it's okay. Well, no, it's not. It's not a good behavior. So those are the kind of things I think we need to go forward with. So I'm glad to get the information, I want to know what's making some of these kids do some of these things, what can we do about that? I don't know that we can just throw another program at them without knowing what makes them do it, you know, why? And I don't think we have that answer. I think that was all the comments I had. I guess, I guess that's it. I guess I just want to make one comment, through the years, as my kids have gone through the high school and past, you hear of a lot of kids that'll just stay home on a Saturday night, and you ask them why, and they won't tell you. Well, you come to find out as they get older, they didn't go out because all of their friends were going to the wrong party. It wasn't that your kid is unpopular, it's just that they made the right choice, and thank goodness for that. The kid made the choice, the parents pushing them to go out, the kids saying, "No, I just want to stay home, I'm tired." Well, you find out why they're tired, because they don't have anywhere else to go, and I find that really sad, that we don't have something for those kids to do. So I guess I'm done with my soapbox.
Yes.
And I could just reiterate, thank you for the work. It's numbing, my numbing to even look at the amount of statistics and then to compare it to the sample and wonder, is it... wonder, is it, is it really representative of our students, um, of all of our students? And how could we disaggregate it better to really understand it? And I know that this report is just the beginning of your work, it isn't the, this isn't an end result, um, that we will continue to look for those answers and get more data, and more clarifying data on the choices our students are making, and the choices we're making as far as what kinds of programs we're putting in place both in our schools and in our communities, uh, to make sure that we're addressing some of those shortcomings, uh, that we've had. So, um, I will look forward to hearing back from you, and I know all of us will, as we begin to stretch this out and look to, uh, where can we take this to share with our community, and so what's the, the added value of this? Are we just gonna ignore it, put it on a shelf, or, which the answer to that is no? That really we're going to use this to help propel our students into a more safe, um, behavior climate than we have at the present, considering that, that even, uh, that the numbers are accurate. So, thank you for your work, and, and we'll continue this, uh, continue dialogue.
Eric, I had just one thing if I could.
Yeah, please.
First of all, I'm, I'm glad to see that you're gonna, um, broaden the middle school part, because I think that was a question that I had as I looked at this, you know, our ninth grade is at the high school, but I know in other schools, it's actually the last middle school year, and so I think in some cases, that may influence a little bit of the answers that the ninth graders give you, depending on what environment they're in, right? Um, you know, and I, I think that's, again, one of the, you know, I'm in full support of our ninth graders being at the high school, but I think that's one of the cons, if you wanna call it that, is they're exposed to some things perhaps earlier than they would have if it's a ten through twelve. But I, you know, you know, in the, uh, in, in the perfect world, obviously none of these kids would be taking these at-risk behaviors and doing all that, you know? I went to Prior Lake High School, I saw a lot of things that are still being shown up here, but the thing that I, I, you know, I guess, yeah, we need to go to the root cause, which is don't do the act to begin with, but the thing that really I think we need to help figure out is how to keep the kid from making one bad decision become a second and third, which is driving, the binge drinking, or whatever, because I think those are the things where the catastrophic event can occur, that you can't then come back and say, oops, it's too bad that happened. Um, and so I, I would really be encouraging us to focus on, yeah, we wanna go to the root cause, but at the same time, you know, let's at least try to focus on helping the kids make a better decision once they've kind of already let the cat out of the bag, if you will, because I think that's the real potential, you know, horrible, uh, event that could occur, that I think we wanna make sure that, to date, we've been pretty fortunate to not have that happen too often. So that's, that's, I guess, my, my real concern, is that as we look at this, that we help the kids understand that, you know, um, call it a safe zone or whatever, that, you know, don't, don't further compound the, the issue, I guess, right?
Any other questions? Yes.
Have we looked at, uh, how we could address the high school participation level to be a little bit better than what it was? Was the survey too big, was it too short, put at a different time? How do we, how do we fix that survey level? Because it is quite small.
Well, the, the survey asks three different questions about participation, they break, uh, the options down to school-sponsored sports, community-sponsored sports, athletics.
Not, not so much participation as in, uh-
The seniors are answering.
Now you're talking about-
No.
You know, it goes by grade by grade, you give it out there, we take them all and put them in a room.
We take them all, we put them in a room, but flat out, you can't force the kids to do it. There is no hook, you put it out there, some years, some grades will take it very seriously, some years they won't, every school I've been at, we're no different, your senior year drops off drastically, um, and I've been at three different high schools, they said, you sit them all in a room, and we do it, but, it's up to them, so I don't, you know, I've never found the way, and it's the same at three different schools and three different communities.
Maybe we'll need to capitalize on some of that moodle technology. Catch their attention that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You know, I just wanna say, just kinda thinking through this, there, there are some alarming statistics in this report, but I gotta say, we got some really great kids overall. I mean, when, when we look at our kids going off-campus to events, when we see them participate in the, in the state standardized testing, and, and in the community, working in their churches, and working in, as volunteers, uh, the, you know, the relatively few problems we have at one of the largest high schools in the state, yeah, we've got some blemishes, but we've really got some great kids, too, and so we've just gotta help those great kids be just a little bit better. So, I'm concerned with some of the statistics, some of the comparisons, but overall, I, I guess I'm heartened by that, we've got, you know, we've got a good family structure overall, it shows by the, the percent of parents who care for their students, or the students who feel cared for, um, and we have some students that, that generally behave very well, and, and I'm proud of that. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, open enrollment at Prior Lake High School, Mr. Lern.
Okay, I, I can do that.
Oh, okay. It says presenter.
It does say that down there, doesn't it? Dave, maybe you could help me out with this one, if, if I should need you. Five oh seven, which is open enrollment of out-of-school district, out of, out of district students, um, and we are, uh, our high school is closed to open enrollment, but, uh, because we are, um, uh, next door to Burnsville Savage, which is a racially isolated district, we are part of the integration, um, statute, um, and so each year, we need to decide, are we going to open enroll or not, and for what period of time? Uh, we could stay closed for the year ahead and say no, uh, but last year, you might recall, that we had a lengthy conversation about the open enrollment, uh, the fact that some of these students that have applied for the high school, uh, have brothers and sisters, brothers or sisters, uh, at the high school, uh, their parents may have a storefront, um, in downtown Prior Lake, um, or they, um, might have always considered themselves a Laker, even though they've gone to one of our, our private schools, and they're now matriculating over to our high school with their peer group. This year, we have, um, eleven students that have applied for open enrollment to the high school for, um, two thousand eleven and twelve, and last year at this time, we had about twenty to twenty-two, um, and I propose that we open, open, open enrollment for a period of, uh, until our next board meeting, um, and we have eleven right now, I would venture to say that the number won't get over twenty at the very most. I have alerted the, um, principals at both Saint Mike's and Saint John's, which are our biggest, uh, users of open enrollment, um, and that would allow us to take the siblings of those students that are currently at our high school, and those that, uh, have parents that have been supporting our schools in a variety of different ways. And that's, uh, why it is on the agenda for this evening, that we would have a period of open enrollment, and then we'd close for the remainder of the year. Uh, David, did you have something else to add to that? No.
The last question I have is, is there a maximum number we would accept?
I think twenty.
Last year, last year, I can't remember, it was twenty or twenty-five, there was a maximum last year, I know we did not reach it.
We have that same criteria this year, then?
The same criteria, we'd be, we'd be open until February fourteenth.
With the maximum.
And with the, with the maximum being twenty.
And if we go over that maximum?
I would bring that number back to you, but I don't anticipate we would, because these parents are agreeing that they will provide transportation, uh, for those students for the years that they're here, which is a big family commitment.
But to answer, I mean, if it goes over twenty, then it's first come, right? It's the first twenty, right?
It's the first twenty.
Okay, I'd like to take a motion to, um, open up, open up, uh, allow open enrollment at the high school for a maximum of twenty students for the period between, uh, January twenty-four and, uh, February fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
By Lee, second.
Second.
By Tom, uh, any questions or discussion?
I guess I have one question. So we accept twenty kids, and that means all their siblings can go-
That, this would be an annual decision that we make, uh, we give highest priority in our policy five oh seven to those families that have siblings, um, but it would be my hope that each year, we would have a small window of time to those siblings, we could depend on what our numbers look like. As we get to our maximum about the year two thousand fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, that might be the year we say, you know, we just can't do it this year, uh, but it could be that the numbers will fluctuate between now and then also.
Okay, so if those twenties, I am in trouble here. Those twenty students are allowed in, and they have siblings in younger grades?
It would be an annual decision.
Those get in then?
Only if we decide, it's not automatic.
The ones we're seeing currently are ones who have siblings, those are the current open enrollment. Hold on, if we have a, if we have a sibling that's open enrolled in, let's say, five hocks, then we have that student all the way through high school.
Right.
They're not part of this.
But if we have a, um, I think what you're saying is that if we have a, um, next year, an eleventh grader who has a incoming ninth grade-
Right.
-brother or sister, would they automatically be accepted in high school? And that answer is no. We would, we remain closed until this time each year, and then we have that option to open it for a very short period of time for those families that have those special circumstances.
But if they have a sibling at fifth grade?
Then they're in.
In middle school, they're in.
They're in.
And then they stay all the way through?
Right.
But that's the key, they have to stay.
Yes.
Because if they, they leave, then they're right back to the same thing, right?
But to Mike's point, and you said we give, we like to give priority, I, I don't necessarily see that in the policy, and it really is first come, first served, we can't, we can't apply any criteria, can we?
No, uh, but we, we have tried in the past to give priority to our families, and I, I did read it here a little bit ago, let me see if I can find it again, um, we do try to give priority to the siblings of our current families, we can't always do that, so that's why it comes back every year, and some year, we may say, no, we just don't have the ability to take any open enrollment, and that's the board's decision. Once we close this window on February fourteenth, there will be no open enrollment, um, for Prior Lake High School, unless it's a junior or senior, or it's a different statute, but under the open enrollment guidelines, then there will not be any other open enrollments.
And I thought during the growth task force, we were forced to take some open enrollment based on the integration plans that we have outside of this?
Yes.
And how does that affect the number of twenty? Do we count that as part of the twenty, or is this in addition to that?
That would be in addition to this, as would juniors and seniors, through enrollment options, juniors and seniors can enroll in any high school they want in the state of Minnesota, just so you know that upfront, that with the integration, they are not counted as part of these twenty, but those students probably equal six or eight last year. I mean, it's not like we're getting fifty or sixty kids through integration in juniors and seniors, they were maybe eight total last year between juniors and seniors, and that's the same law that allows them to go PSEO, allows them to go to any high school in the state, whether they're closed to enrollment or not, and then the integration, and that was maybe eight students last year, above and beyond the twenty we allowed in.
Matt?
The place in the policy where you can find that statement is in section three in the second paragraph there, the second heading, under acceptance of open enrollment, it's the last sentence in that first paragraph.
Simply as an accepted student, will be given highest priority for open enrollment.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried seven zero. Thank you. Budget parameters and long-range planning, Julie.
Good evening, um, Chair Pratt, Dr. Grover, and board members, um, we will be discussing a little bit the budget update, um, we are working on our parameters for the next school year, um, I just wanna talk a little bit about how much the state and the school funding are linked. Minnesota, we had a chance to go visit, um, have, we went to a seminar on, um, with our latest, um, the two Toms, Tom Stinson and, um- Gilipsy, and they are demographer and our economist for the state, and they are projecting that we have a six point two billion dollar shortfall for, um, two thousand twelve and thirteen, and, but the best news that they gave us was they do feel that the economy has strengthened since the November forecast. One of the things they did talk about was that the state funding would grow by five percent, however, our expenditures in the state are also growing by about twenty percent, they've offset that growth by the federal stimulus dollars, and so they were able to continue to spend at that high rate, um, but that is catching up with us at this point. They, those linkages between the state and the school districts, um, are important because our enrollment has, um, peaked, we are beginning to see a slight decline, we're stable right now, but we are anticipating a slight decline for the next several years. This has been the longest and deepest recession we've had since, um, World War Two, with the longest recovery period, so you've seen we've had the same funding for several years for the, um, school district. We've cut in the last year three point seven million from the budget, and we will see additional reductions due to the six-period day and declining enrollment. Eighty percent of our sources of our revenue at the school's district comes from state sources, and so what happens at the, um, state level definitely impacts what happens here at our local level. Schools are under some financial stress right now, and that's across the state, and really across the nation, um, we'll have continued freeze at the state level in our per pupil funding, um, we will see some increased, increased cash flow borrowing, just simply due to the shifts and the education payment delays that we've seen. Our district does not qualify for the education delay because we don't, do not have more than seven hundred dollars per pupil unit in our undesignated fund balance. We do see ongoing persistent and increasing unfunded mandates, things that the legislature has required districts to do with no funding to support them. We've seen over the past several years prorated, um, reductions in state aid formulas, and increased reliance on our property tax levies for our operating revenue. And you will see that our special ed cross subsidy is over five hundred million dollars for the state, and that means that the, that, that money must come out of the general fund, because there isn't enough money in special ed to cover that. Talking about some of our budget parameters, the district is in a good financial position right now, they've worked hard, made those cuts, we do have stable enrollment, those are the very positive things, we have sound financial management in the district, and good communication for our staff and community. We really wanna work on balancing the needs of our students, and at the same time being fiscal responsible, um, all of our recommendations will be based on that student achievement, fiscal integrity, and this, and our strategic plan that the board has put together. Some major initiatives that we have, curriculum review and implementation cycle, um, updating our communication systems and infrastructure, um, six-period day, which we've had some discussions about, the thin client labs at the high school, and other areas for K-12 alignment, just simply due to our space configuration at the high school level, and we are in phase three of our SMARTboard implementation. We are working on enrollment, right now, the two things that we're really waiting on are what we really see in February for enrollment for kindergarten, and we should know what those numbers are by the end of the month, and also, we are waiting on the final, um, scheduling at the high schools, so we're making some determinations for enrollment and staffing. We are anticipating, hopefully, keeping our fingers crossed, that we will stay at the fifty-one twenty-four per pupil funding, I anticipate that our categorical aids will remain the same, I do anticipate, as I said earlier, that we will see continued shifts, so we are at, um, anticipate that they would rather, the legislature would rather make that change and shift the money so we would be delayed in our payments than to, um, make a cut to our general education revenue. Some other, um, revenue parameters, like, um, keep our operating capital, secondary vocational, our federal aids, we'll see some increase in federal aids, but we'll also see those increased expenditures at that level, our gifts, donations will remain the same, and also, our interest rate is very low right now, and I anticipate that will remain that way. We will anticipate those prorations in special ed, and the one area that we have some additional funding is that federal jobs bill that we did receive in August of this year, so that will, we haven't spent all of that at this point, and so that will help us in the future, we have one additional year to spend that money. For expenditure budgets, we are basing our enrollment, our staffing on our enrollment and our current grade level ratios, both at the elementary and secondary- grade level ratios, both at the elementary and secondary level, and also taking into consideration that six-period day. For purposes of budgeting, we have a little over $51 million in staffing costs. If we were to give any increases, 1% would be almost a half a million dollars, just a little over half a million. We are anticipating no increases in our supply budgets, allocating our capital based on building age and square footage. We'll have some possibility of increases in telephone, transportation, we may have some, simply due to the rising gas prices, and we will look very closely at that when we're developing the budget. And we do anticipate its supplies to increase by 3%. Federal programs equal our federal revenues. Staff development, we do spend 1.65% of our general education revenue on staff development, and we'll base our other budgets based on the past history for substitutes and overtime. One area that we are looking closely at is our OPEB costs, other post-employment benefit costs, and how that can be worked back into the general fund if we need to. We want to continue to be fiscally responsible and provide that quality education to all of our students. We want to do our best, given our current financial climate, and we will, again, the board is just completing the second year of a two-year long-range plan, and we will do that again when the legislature convenes or finishes their work in May, and then we will look at another two-year plan based on the outcomes of that, of those results. We anticipate that we'll continue to reduce over the next several years. That is the new normal, unfortunately, just because of the, where the state is at, that closely tied to what's happening at the state level. Any questions?
More sobering news.
You can hear a pin drop, because it's just not good news.
Okay. Did you want to, so that was the long-range plan. Anything on the parameters that we have on the agenda?
That was the parameters, and we are not taking any action on the long-range plan at this point. We will do so when, at the end of the legislative session.
Great. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the budget parameters for the 2011, 2012 fiscal year?
So moved.
By Mike. Second. By Stacy. Any questions or discussion? I should mention, the board went through this at a study session before the meeting, and had a chance to preview some of this. I think it is, it's concerning, and I'm glad we took the two-year approach last year, and I think it's something that we need to continue as the state enters into each biennium.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
We talked a little bit about cash flow, and you mentioned about the shift. Can you explain that a little bit?
Right now, the state shifts our money, which means we received 70% of our aid in the first year and the remaining 30% in year two. And there's been some discussion that the, what will happen is that they will shift us to like a 50-50, so we'll receive only 50% of our revenue in the first year, and then we receive this other 50% in the second year. The state can do that because they are on a cash basis, we are on a fund balance basis, and so their cash looks better when they do that type of a shift and delay the money to us. What that really means for the district, however, is that because we're not receiving that revenue, that money from the state, it shorts our cash flow, so we're not able to meet those obligations such as payroll and our monthly expenditures, so most likely we will need to borrow either through aid anticipation certificates, or we can open a line of credit with a bank. So those are our two options, and we'll look closely at those and what those expenditures are, but I would strongly suggest that those expenditures be included in our budget for next year.
I just have a comment on reflecting after the earlier session, that, you know, I know we still have time to look at, you know, our future plans and all that, but I guess I look at three main reasons for us having our fund balance, if you will. One is the cash flow, you know, because we don't get our payments. The other is the proverbial unexpected things to cover that. And then the third is the rainy day, right? And I think everybody would agree that we've been experiencing some rainy days here, but I think we philosophically, as a board and administration, have to think through, if we go down the path of saying, let's start to use some of those funds so that we don't have to make cuts as deep, it took us a lot of time to get to where we're at, so I would hope that we would also not, just in one fell swoop, in one budget year, lose all of that, because I think it was a lot of sacrifices made by a lot of people, students, teachers, administrators, families, and so I think that we really have to have a long, drawn-out discussion on what the best approach for that would be before we kind of commit to one path or another, because that was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that went into that.
Absolutely. I 100% agree with you, Mike. We've worked very hard to get to this stability that we actually, we have for this period of time, and we are going to work very hard to continue that. So there will be robust conversations that Julie and I will bring back to the finance committee and back to the full board invited to that finance discussion, so that you fully understand where we are, what our options are, and the choices that are before us. Because number one, we want to protect student learning at all costs, as best as we can, but at the cost that we can afford. So therein lies the controversy of which way do we go? We have to spend within our means, and I'm committed to do that. So any decision we make on how we fund our future will be based on a collective conversation and ongoing dialogue over a period of several months before we make that decision.
That fund balance is a one-time, it's like a savings account. So once it's gone, it's gone, you can't use it every year, and so exactly right, to use it in one fell swoop would be difficult for the district, because you'd have to make those cuts in that second year then.
Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion in the second on accepting the budget parameters. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We have ECFE Circle of Friends preschool rate increase. Ms. Williams?
I am here to request a, or make a proposal to increase the Circle of Friends preschool tuition rate. The current rates are charged on a monthly basis to Circle of Friends participants, and the rate differs whether the child is attending a two-day-a-week or a three-day-a-week preschool program. In the current school year, Town 11, our families are paying for a two-day-a-week preschool, $120 a month, or $1,080 per year, and for a three-day-a-week preschool, $160 a month, or $1,440 a year. The last time we had a rate increase was two years ago, and at that time, the rates were raised by $5 per month, or $45 per year. And so that was two years ago. And now, because of our desire to maintain our balanced budget and to continue to be in line with the preschools in the area, we are looking at proposing the same kind of increase of $5 per month, or $45 for the entire year, for both programs, the two and three-day-a-week, and would hope that the board would consider that, so we can maintain our intentions. Currently, at this time, our preschool rates fall in the middle to lower end of our other preschools in the area. There are some that are a little bit less than us, and some that are considerably more than us, so we would still maintain very much within the average of what preschools that run on two or three days a week cost in the area.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the proposal for the rate increase in Circle of Friends. So moved by Tom. Second. Approved by Rich. Any questions or discussion?
What are the enrollment numbers you currently have?
We are currently serving about 200 preschoolers in Circle of Friends, and just this evening had 50 people at our open house looking to add their program to their life for next year, so.
Is the program full? I mean, is it-
The program is currently full. We have waiting lists at every level. Next year, we are hoping, for our budgeting at this point, to add an additional section to take care of some of those waiting lists. Previously, the Circle of Friends has run more sections of preschool, and during the first rounds of budgeting two years ago, they did cut back on the number of sections, but we believe our participation is so high right now, and taking a look at, having shifted some monies within the budget around, that we would like to add that additional section this next year. Obviously, of course, if we can fill it or be close to maintaining in the black for what it would cost us to run it, so it's looking good there.
Great.
Are most of the students from our district, or is there-
The vast majority are from the Prairie Lake Savage District, but we do pull in kids from Lakeville, Shakopee, Burnsville, Eagan. Many of them may have parents that work in the area or have daycare in the area and utilize Circle of Friends preschool.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion in the second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no policy this evening, so we'll move on to administrative reports. Superintendent's report?
As you know, our communication, improving communication has been a goal of ours, and to that end, we added a Twitter account last year, and up and running right now is our brand-new Facebook page, and when we have 25, do we have 25 yet, Kristi? Not yet. When we have 25 people that subscribe, then we'll be on official Facebook page, so we have to wait until that happens, so I want you to all run home tonight and go to our homepage of our district, and on the bottom-right side, you will see the Facebook logo right next to the Twitter logo, and if you push on the Facebook page, it will ask you to subscribe on the left-hand side, so you have to go right-left, and then you have an opportunity to have updates on our webpage. We've already had one hit right away, right after it was posted, so that was very encouraging, that we'll have another way, another vehicle, to reach our families 24/7 of giving them information and updates. In addition to that, tonight is our very first live streaming of our school board meeting, so you now, from our webpage, will be able to go to our school board meetings and stream it live or review it. There will be a table of contents, so you can go to a content area if you want to know about the budget parameters, for instance, tonight you could click on that, and it would just be Julie's presentation, followed by the board comments and conversation and questions. So we're very excited about having that as an opportunity for our families as well and for our community, who is interested in seeing our school board meetings, can't be here in person, and perhaps does not have cable. Our cable, Channel 17, will continue to run for those families that do have it, so that will continue to be an offering as we move forward. I wanted you to know that during this month of January, we are having paraprofessional recognition week at each of our buildings. Each of the buildings has chosen to do it a different week, but it's a recognition of those people that work in our district and really support our students and student learning, so we wanted you to be aware of that and to recognize them in our community. As you know, last week, or two weeks ago, I was at a conference, the Midwest Suburban Superintendent's Conference. It was excellent, and I so enjoyed my time there, learning from what other states in the Midwest area are doing with regards to the budget and what that, how that's affecting student instruction and programs within each of the districts that we're representing, as well as making those good connections of people that I will call on in the future as we go through difficult times, knowing that they have expertise in different areas than I do. So I will enjoy that ongoing collaboration. Next week, we will have a second opportunity to share what we've done with the six-period day, moving from a seven-period to a six-period day. Earlier this year, I shared the information, how we got to our decision with the 196 Superintendent, Jane Behrens, as they moved their middle school to a six-period day. And now, next week on Tuesday night, school board members, administrators, school administrators, and Mr. Holmberg and I will be sharing with Jordan Public Schools, their administrators and school board members, that same information. We'll be doing that here next Tuesday night, February 1st, at 6:30 p.m. So I'm looking forward to that. And my last point is that on February 23rd, I'm getting this way out here, over a month, or just a little over a month from now, we, at 6:30 p.m., we will have a preschool parent conversation, coffee and conversation, we call it Java Jive, to discuss opportunities in the future for elementary students, beginning in kindergarten or first grade, to have something different in their elementary experience here in Prairie Lake Savage area schools, whether that be an immersion or a STEM opportunity, whichever that would be, but to get information back from our community on what they perceive to be the best options for their students and for their families. So we'll be collecting that information. That's February 23rd at 6:30 here at the district office.
Okay. Any other administrative reports? Okay. Any board reports, committee reports, please?
About a week and a half ago, we had our scale meeting, and it was our legislative platform meeting, I guess. Jeff Holmberg attended with me, and in front of you, I have the legislative platform that we presented to the legislators. We had about six of them attend, two of the senators, and the rest were state representatives, and the three that we usually see were all there also. It was interesting, we presented our platform, and then we heard back from each one of them, and it was a good dialogue, I think it went well, considering all the state's issues anyway, but interestingly, Claire Robling, who is the chair of the finance committee, she spoke first as a senior member, and she painted a pretty gloomy picture, so it supports everything that we're hearing, but she is asking for ideas, she's asking for help. And so if we have any great ideas, she'd love to hear them. Some of the other people were new, I think actually the majority, four of the, or maybe three out of the six were new, and there are, a lot of them were businessmen. They want to see more local control. They would like to see some of the unfunded mandates removed. And one of the state representatives was talking about more transparency in school funding and how we have our funding done, and I remember when I first started on the board, it was very complicated, it still is, so I'm wishing him good luck to make that more simple and transparent. But it was a good morning, and I know that we're hoping that the legislators will come to visit with us. I believe it's February 7th we're looking at, and I think they're very open to hearing what we have to say and understanding our needs. I think this is the first time in the five or six years I've been in scale where they've come, that they've actually felt like they really listened to us, so I think it's a good time for us to do that. So that's for scale.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
The Transportation Committee met earlier today with the bus contractors and had, I think, a real positive discussion, Stacy's first opportunity in a formal capacity to meet with them, and so we talked about, you know, how the year's gone so far, and I think, you know, obviously, there's always questions, concerns that come up, but, you know, from Jim's perspective and Michelle's, everything seems to be no more than years past, if Jim's going to give me a head nod if that's the case or not. But Jim's also then going to be working on a survey to go out to the community, I think, through a Survey Monkey or Listserve or something coming, so for anybody tuning in, keep your eyes open for that in the next couple of weeks or so. Let's see, then we kind of talked about some of the kind of just pervasive issues, I think, especially the middle school, with the earlier start time and some of the decisions that families have made to perhaps allow their middle schoolers to sleep in a little bit, which creates some traffic challenges in the morning hours, and so no solutions coming out, but I think good discussion, and I think an intent to kind of continue that dialogue to see if there may be some other creative approaches for us to look at, perhaps being able to relieve that pressure time, I think, from about 7:00 to 7:20 or whatever each morning. Anybody here on the board or out in the public that's been there, I think knows what we're talking about. And then lastly, next year will be the fourth year of our four-year contract with the bus contractor, so we talked already about when the appropriate time might be to kind of start the conversation on where we go in the future with that. And, you know, Julie and Dr. Grover- And, you know, Julie and Dr. Grover were both there as well, and Julie at the tail end mentioned that similar to what we just saw with our budget-long-range planning, that perhaps soon after we get sort of a good feel for what the state is planning to do, that it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to start the conversation then with that contract, understanding what, you know, what our parameters are going to be. And all three of them, you know, Jim, Ron, and Kevin all certainly understand where we're at and are more than willing to work with us to, you know, find a solution as we go forward that works for everybody. I don't know. Stacy, you got anything to add to that or not?
No, I just, I mean, it was a great meeting, a lot of people involved, very, you know, it could definitely, you know, they're all local people in our community, and I think that goes a long way when we talked about, you know, service and making sure that, you know, our people are here for it, which I think, in the end, parents, I mean, that's what they see is, you know, how they're being serviced. So I thought it was a great meeting, and the fact that they were very open to working with us, you know, knowing our situation.
I'm just going to follow up, that while you were speaking, Suzanne, I did go online, and you didn't mention, it's on the right-hand side for the videos. It's on the quick guide, and I did punch in, and we're live and streaming, and we all look very, very good. Very handsome group.
I'll just, I'll just make a quick mention. Building committee is scheduled for Thursday, Thursday evening to meet. Any other administrative reports, committee reports?
I did not mention just one thing, and that is that we are hosting our legislators, Senator Claire Robling, Representative Mike Beer, and Representative Mark Biskin's on Monday, February 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00, to have a, an open conversation about what's coming up this legislative session and what kind of input we can give to them to help inform them, to keep that communication going throughout the session, and not just a one-time only shot, but really to begin it again. So we're looking forward to hosting that here at the district office on Monday, February 7th.
Will that cause us to move the board study session to the 14th then, as printed in the agenda?
It would probably force us to do so. We were waiting to get confirmation. Did we, Martha, get confirmation on all candidates, all the, two of them? So as soon as we have it confirmed, confirmed, we'll make those changes.
Okay. Looking at future events, we have parent-teacher conferences continuing tomorrow. Mr. Edwards? As part of parent-teacher conferences, I know we're doing some, some presentations on registration, particularly for the eighth grade. Do you want to just make a quick mention of that?
Do you actually, are we all doing, or doing? Yes. We are doing, at the two middle schools, presentations tomorrow evening for our current sixth-grade students and for our current seventh-grade students. We, in years past, we haven't done that for registration because they're in our system, but with the changes to the six-period day, we are doing that, and...
And tomorrow night at the high school, there is a meeting with our counselors for the current eighth-grade parents going into ninth grade, and then last Thursday night at 5:00, 6:00, and 7:00 o'clock respectively, we had conferences, we had meetings, I should say, presentations for current ninth, 10th, and 11th grade parents.
Great. Thank you. We have SIS Night Live on January 27th. We talked about the legislatures, legislators possibly coming on the 7th, if not, at least having a board study session, early release on the 9th, and our regular scheduled board meeting on Valentine's Day, the 14th. So I know we all want to deal with each other on that special holiday.
I'll have handy hearts.
Is there any other business that needs to come before the board this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
By Lee. Second.
Second.
By Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we stand adjourned.
He just liked it.
I do.
Yeah, he was...